Camera comes on, okay. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Selectment of June 7th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is announcements. We have a scheduled item, a Solar Wolf update. Is that you, Bob?
Yes, sir. I would like to just give a brief announcement with respect to the Solar Wolf issues that are going on. We've been in direct contact with all of the Solar Wolf customers on June 3. A detailed written update went out to customers with some specific guidance as to steps that need to be taken to file claims. And I wanted to also report that on June 6, a long awaited meeting took place that was orchestrated by our legislative delegation and all of the state agencies, the D O E R, that's the Department of Energy Resources, the Clean Energy Center, the Attorney General's Office, all met with us and Senator Seer, Representative Wayland, Representative Diggs. And the key point, and we're preparing a joint correspondence from all of those parties that were at the meeting to update local residents, and the state agencies have vowed to assist local customers. The Attorney General's Office is spearheading an audit of contract status for every customer. To date, the Attorney General's Office only has the details on approximately 35 of 55 customers that are impacted. So to make things easier for any impacted households, customers are asked to contact the Yarmouth Police Department, if you haven't done so already, to file a police report, and that will contain all of the information that the Attorney General needs. And it's a critical step. We hope folks follow it, but we are very encouraged to see the state agencies lending support. People need to have patience. We're told it's a complex issue. It won't be resolved overnight, but a lot of folks are working on it, and this written correspondence will be going out to every impacted customer.
Mr. Chairman, can you just speak to that?
Sure.
To be candid with you, I'm not entirely convinced that the town doesn't have some responsibility here. What I'd like to see happen is if we could possibly have some presentation, just so that we can fully understand the timeline about when the relationship with the Solar Wolf broke down and when we knew it, and whether or not after that point, if we were making representations to the people of the town to still participate in the project. I just don't feel like we have a lot of information, and I'd like to have more because I don't want to, I don't want the town of Yarmouth to be pushing all of the responsibility off onto the state or to somebody else, if indeed we have some responsibility here to the people that participated. And, and so I guess what I'm just asking is, is, you know, if we could at some point have a presentation so that, you know, we can more fully understand exactly what happened and when it happened, and whether or not the steps that the town took and any particular committees that the town has, whether or not they were appropriate, or whether they lend themselves to our taking a larger share of responsibility for what's happened here.
If I may just address that very briefly, I think what we should do is report Dan's concerns to Town Council and to see then what format he recommends that this should be brought up in. I'm starting, I'm starting to feel like it's probably a matter for executive session, and I want to make sure we, we proceed appropriately. But I do, I do understand your sentiments and your commitment to the people. I think we all share that. Any other public announcements before we go to public comment? Okay, I'm gonna go to public comment then. Does anybody wish to be recognized? Vita Morris.
Thank you, Vita Morris. I want to follow up on this subject matter, and what I would like to see, I'm glad that the, Mr. Rittenhour said that the elected officials are on board already, but what I would like them to do actually is to see if they can find out if anybody, a person and entity in Boston is looking into just how they came to recommend this, this Solar Wolf or whatever, to, to the town of Yarmouth and I guess any other towns or what have you in this project. So, I mean, somebody needs to get to the bottom of this. It sounds almost like a scam type thing. Apparently, the Better Business Bureau has a long list of, you know, shady dealings by, by this company. So how much, you know, digging into what they have had to do to come up with some information that would have given them pause not to recommend this? I just think it really is necessary to get to the bottom of how they came to, on what basis they came to make that recommendation.
Thank you, Vita. I think, I think everybody would like more information on this, and hopefully as we proceed and we get answers to those questions, will they be able to address them publicly to the extent that we can? I share some of the same questions that you just raised myself personally.
The people to do that would be the, not the town itself, but the legislators. This is something that I would like to see the legislators.
Tom, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations to the board. Nice new look for a new year. My name is Tom Nickenau from the very historic village of Bass River in this wonderful old town of Yarmouth. And just a couple of comments, if you may, thank you very much. Last meeting you folks had, there was a gentleman here for, you know, town for many years, the ex-director of Natural Resources, Kyle Van Home, and Mr. Van Home is gonna be surely missed. I just wanted to point out that Mr. Van Home, or as we call Yarmouth's own Dr. Dolittle, was very instrumental in getting our dog park up and running with very no cost to the town. And as, at the dog park has been in, in about two or three, four seasons now, I think it is, it's been received very well. And Mr. Van Home did some wonderful work researching. There was a fund called a Stanton Fund from a gentleman who was giving the towns on Cape money for, for that particular reason, and Mr. Van Home fell into that, and he did a great job in not, not taking too much of our money for a dog park, which everyone truly loves, by the way. If you haven't been there, it's, it's quite a buck, so. I just want to make a little comment about the election. There was 3,200 registered voters that came out, and I think that's tremendous. It was such a beautiful day, why would you come to vote anyways? But they did, and those people are the diehards of our town. Would we like to see that number increased? Absolutely. But for those people who came out, thank you all so much. I know I believe in the democratic process, and my family does, and we vote as much as we can, when we can, for the right person. So I think it's great. I just want to talk a little about, we had a great report out from the water superintendent and our DPW director, Jeff Collier, about some water conservation plans. And, you know, conserving water is extremely important, as we all know. And as we gear up to go into our wastewater cycle and, and provide a plant, I believe in the future, we're gonna probably be running into a big problem with what some of the other towns have now, and that's getting rid of our reclaimed water. Right now, our septic treatment plant over on Workshop Row generates about 20 million gallons, and we only use about half of that, and the other half is dumped. And, you know, we're gonna be going full bore, creating more reclaimed water, which is very safe. And there should be some kind of discussion on how we can make that work for our citizens in our town. We want to conserve water as much as possible, which is, water is our life, then we should at least have a discussion. There was a, there was a report out from the New England Water Environmental Association back in 2018, and it says, highly treated effluents should be considered a resource. So we have multiple documents over the last five years saying that the reclaimed water we generate now should be put to good use, and I believe it's time, at least we talk about it. We talked about sprinklers on the off days, we talked about cutting water back, but here's a whole different animal that needs a discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else? Is there anybody on the, on the screen? Tom Sullivan, can you hear me?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, on your agenda tonight, I, when I do your meetings, I usually look at the packet, and I do this once a week, every time you have it. And I happen to notice the Community Economic Development Committee charge that's on your agenda tonight, and I understand it's a draft. I watched the meeting, their last meeting, and at the meeting, this was brought up, this charge by the Assistant Town Manager. There were some questions raised in regards to some of the proceedings on the charge, and I happened to see one myself that I yet to raise a question on, a couple of them. One is, the committee will have one member from the business community, and that raises a question, and I think raised a question at the meeting, whether that could be a conflict of interest. And I think it comes under the Chamber of Commerce, and I happen to notice now that a member of the Chamber of Commerce is on this committee. I might be wrong, but there is, I believe, a serious possibility of a conflict of interest here. Hundreds of thousands of dollars of tourism funds goes through this committee, and it goes to the Chamber of Commerce. I don't believe the Chamber of Commerce should be involved with the committee at all as a voting member. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not against the Chamber of Commerce. They serve their members well. It is a private entity. I've had people actually ask me if it's part of the town Yarmouth Department. I said, no, it's a private entity made up of paying members. So I would question that. The other parts, it looks pretty good as far as coming before the board and town meeting with the expenditure of funds, that would be a first, because I know I have requested in the past a breakdown of the spending or where it's gone. The other part I'd like to address, and I was surprised to see this, is in regards to the disclosure of municipal employee of financial interest. That individual right now sits on the Chamber of Commerce, and under this new contract, I guess they signed with the town, this individual will be brought in a salary. I would recommend that this not be approved. This individual will be given special employee status. I believe that the Chamber, as I said before, the Chamber should not be involved with this committee, other than presenting what their needs are, and that's it. I think the committee should be broken up for citizens who are looking over and make a decision. I think they could, these are some questions were raised at the meeting by their own members. One even made a reference to a influence on how they vote. So I would seriously take a look at this, and I would actually ask the State Ethics Commission, GASS, for a review of what the board might have to do before it decides anything on what it's gonna do, or whether or not there's a conflict of interest here. I believe the Assistant Town Manager did present it, presented very well at the meeting by, by chance I was listening. So that was what I would like to address tonight. Since the individual here is involved with the Chamber of Commerce, is now taking a salary from the town because of a new contract, I don't believe that they should be sitting on this economic committee since they deal with hundreds of thousands of dollars going to the chamber. And two, I don't believe that the committee itself has actually sat down and really got into the nuts of this, to really look it over and make a decision in their recommendations. So I would suggest that maybe the board should throw it back to the committee before it even thinks about a decision on this committee tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else?
No, that's it.
Is Bruce ready? Are you gonna take that?
Jay's gonna do it.
Okay. We have a Board of Health update on a mask advisory. Every time we hear from the Board of Health, it generally means COVID is running amok when things are good, and we don't have these periodic reports. So what is the bad news for us?
Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure, and thank you for the opportunity, and board members to be here. I haven't had a chance to meet all of you, so thank you for the opportunity for, for a brief, a brief update on, on COVID. Many times, the measure of success in public health is how well we communicate and engage the community with good information. You know, it isn't, vaccination sometimes is vaccinating people with good information so they can make good decisions on their, on their healthcare. And that's exactly what tonight is, and also I'd like to inform you on some action that the, the Board of Health took in this room last night to, again, better prepare and protect the public and the residents of Yarmouth. So not only for this board, and it's a pleasure to meet you, but also the viewing audience so they understand, this has been a long journey, COVID, but knowing that what the, what the positivity rates are, where the vaccination opportunities are, and most importantly, we have some information on test kits that you have in front of you to be able to self-monitor. So if I could just go through a brief slide presentation to help yourself and the viewers. This is just simply that the information that we receive comes from a number of different sources. State DPH, CDC, there's a number of different, where we're, we're bringing together and, and collecting a number of different data points, and there's a lot of moving, moving data, and it changes on a regular basis. Overall, the positivity rate in, in, in Yarmouth is at 21. Now, those are reported cases. The vast majority, and the move is for individuals, and many of you perhaps have tested at home, those are not reported cases, but it's important that individuals do know if they're positive or not. But so our positivity, our positive number of cases that we have right now is at 21. This is month over month, going back to the later part of 21. You can see that Yarmouth peaked in January of over 1,000 with a nice steady decline, but the alarming number there, or the cautionary number, I should say, is in May, we had over 300. So there was an upward, an upward climb and an upward adjustment, and that certainly has our attention. This is more of a longitudinal timeline, showing the different spikes that we've all heard at the national level, at the state level, and now here at the local level, you can see that we've had a number of different, what do you call them, spikes or waves. And our hope is, if you can look in June and July of last year, very negligible numbers, and we're hoping we're heading towards that now. Here is Yarmouth as we are compared to communities across the Cape and the county and the state. You can see that at a, at a positivity rate of over 11%, higher than the county, higher than the state, and higher than each community within, within the Cape. Again, each individual makes their own decision on vaccinations, working with their healthcare provider and their family, but so we certainly want to make sure that it is the one of identified the, the measures to mitigate the, the effects and the symptoms and the impact of COVID. And here we are, Yarmouth is at 80% vaccinated. We have moved up over 80%. Boosted, we're at almost 50%. And again, we always look to, to educate the community, if in fact an individual feels that that is the best avenue for their healthcare to get, to be boosted, vaccinated or boosted. Again, month over month, going back to April, showing a steady incline of positivity rate. We're now, last, last week, we were over 12, but now we're, we've ticked down slightly and hope that downward trend continues. We're over at 11 right now, but again, as Board of Health, this has their attention and they are concerned. Several places where vaccinations are available continue to be available, certainly at the County Health Department on Wednesdays from 10 to 2, 2 to 4 for children, walk-ins are welcome. Cape Cod Hospital, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 6. Here locally, each of the business communities have been very receptive. I have, Bruce and I have visited each of these. They're continuing. CVS Stop and Shop, Walgreens, and it's being scheduled on a regular basis, and they're fairly steady with, with vaccination still, vaccinations and boosters happening each and every day. Urgent care centers by appointment only, but those, again, there's a multitude of distribution sites for that, if someone decides that that's the proceed, the way they want to go as far as vaccinated, being vaccinated. Here is really the, the most important piece, the new information, the next two slides, that the State Department of Public Health, and you have them, in front of you, is home test kits. This, the, the State Department of Public Health is making available test kits to each community. We have been allotted, the town of Yarmouth, I should say, has been allotted 4,230. That has been ordered. We're expecting those deliveries throughout the Commonwealth. And again, I might imagine, I would imagine that most communities will take advantage of this, but the, starting Monday, June 13th, the, the deliveries will start, and we will quickly be working with, not only here at the town hall, at the Health Department, but we'll be working with social service agencies, healthcare providers, the nonprofits, faith-based organizations to try to get this out into the community, just so the individuals can self-monitor. We're in a phase right now where individual, there's a lot of weddings, there's graduations, there's a lot of gathering. If you're at an individual parties and what have you, if you are, if you're going to a setting where there's gonna be close contact, and certainly indoors, you would ask that you would, you would, you would perhaps test. When we've had individuals come in, we've had individuals come in and say they're having a birthday party for their children, they would like to get some test kits. That happens on a regular basis down here in the town hall, at the end of the, at the end of the hall. So people are taking proactive measures. You know, there is a, there is a principle in public health that if you can predict it, you can prevent it. That's exactly what individuals are doing with this information. This is not intended to be an alarm, it's to vaccinate people with good information. And as a result of the, of the numbers that you see, the uptick, the Board of Health took a vote here last night and unanimously voted for a massive mask advisory, given the numbers that we, the increased numbers that we have here in the town of Yarmouth, so that if indoors, and this will be posted certainly in our, our public buildings, also giving out the test kits, but so that the community understands and they'll, they'll make the right decisions for themselves and their family, that, that the numbers may, if, if in fact it works for them, that they may want to use protection, and that being a mask. For, so it's simply an advisory. In no way do I want the board or those listening at home to think that this is a mask mandate. It is not. It is simply an advisory, but that the positivity rate indicates that, in fact, it is still very much present in our community, and we want, the, the goal is to try to protect the, the residents of Yarmouth. Glad to take any questions if I can.
Is anybody from the board in on this, from the Board of Health? No?
I don't think so, no.
I don't.
Okay. So you, you, you are a captive audience, I guess. I'll start with Mark. Mark, do you have anything?
No, I want to thank you for the presentation, and it's, it's, it's great to get an update. The, are you looking for the board to endorse the mask advisory?
This is information only. I do want to make, we're gonna put this out on social media, we're gonna have this on the town website. We want the community to be informed to make decisions.
Okay, so this is, you're not asking for us to endorse something required?
We are not.
You're just encouraging people to do it, okay?
Would like, would like to, certainly the select leaders in our community to be aware that there is now an advisory.
Well, the last time we went through this, we actually put it as an agenda item, and then we required masks, but if you're not asking for us to do that, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
You mentioned that the positivity rate right now is 11.5, but that's with known testing. Do you have any way of ballparking what the real rate of positivity is?
That's, that's a tremendous question. We, we can, we understand that that is artificially under-reported. We can't capture what those numbers, we're, we're asking individuals, and some of you here may have tested at home, with no way to capture that number. So we don't know, but we know of those that are reporting, those that are testing at a facility with reported through the state maven system, it's called, we know that our positivity rate is the highest along the Cape, but we do not know what that number is. It's a great question, it's just, it's an intangible number, we don't know.
Okay. Just a cautionary tale, week and a half ago, I was, I was testing every day because my wife was positive, and all the tests came back negative, but when I started to feel south, I went and got a PCR test, and that showed positive. So even the home tests aren't 100% reliable. If you're not feeling well, I'd recommend people really go in and get a PCR test to have peace of mind, if nothing else.
It's a great piece of, great piece of advice. People need to self-monitor, seeing if, in fact, they're having some symptoms, if they're around individuals that are displaying symptoms, and then take those self-care notes. And certainly, if it escalates to, you know, it's the fever, the coughing, perhaps the headache, but if it escalates to a point of difficulty breathing, do not hesitate to call, you know, 911. You need medical care right away. Hopefully, it never reaches to that, but that's a very good point. Sometimes these home kits will give you some of a baseline, but if you're starting to display symptoms and you're starting to manifest something or have been in some close contacts, you're right, to go to a, a healthcare facility or seek medical advice.
Great presentation, very informative. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. This is, hopefully, the, the viewers at home then, again, this is to guide people to make the best decisions that they can. As you well know, COVID is very disruptive to a family, to a business, academically, financially, economically, it's very disruptive. And anything that we can be doing as a public health within our capacity to mitigate that and hopefully eliminate and prevent that, that's what, that's, that's really the charge of the department.
Well, if I could, one question on that. Is this gonna be provided like on the town website? Is there a way that the public will be able to see your presentation?
Yes, it will be. The presentation, we can put the slide deck up there as well, but the advisory will be on, on a banner as well, to letting, letting people know, and most importantly, is that these test kits are now available. We don't have them in the building right now, but, but we will, starting, well, we don't have an definitive date of delivery, but starting Monday, they're gonna be distributed to the, to the communities in the Commonwealth. Where we are on the list, I don't know. I, I hope they don't go alphabetically. I hope, I hope we're, we get a delivery sooner than later.
No, I just mean that I think it would be very interesting for a lot of people to see the numbers and where we stand versus the other towns in the Cape. So if we had a link, for instance, from the town website, to be able to see that presentation, I think it would be very helpful.
Appreciate it, we'll make that happen.
Just a couple of things. As was indicated earlier, it's very hard to know what the real rate of infection is in a community with all the home testing kits that they have. Before we had that, if we had this kind of a percentage, it would be somewhat alarming. Now, it's probably a lot higher than that, that's my guess. But back to the efficacy of the test, when, when these home tests were originally talked about, and I asked what the effective, the, the rate of accuracy was, they said it was very, very high. And I hear in case after case, like what Dan was saying, where people get these home tests and they test negative. these home tests and they test negative and then they go to the hospital or clinic or someplace like that and they test positive. And so leading up to my question, when I heard Dan had COVID and he sits to my immediate left. I thought it might be a good idea to use one of these home test kits and I, and I took the test and I took another one the next day just to make sure. And they were, and they were negative. And then our town administrator, who sat on the other side of him, tested positive for COVID. So when do you trust these home tests and when don't you? In other words, I, I would imagine that you have to measure them in some way against the severity of the symptomatology. Can you comment on that?
Well, I, I would say this, I can't speak to the reliability of the test kits. The fact that the State Department of Public Health is delivering these to 351 communities, I have to think they, they have, they have some strong confidence, not with zero defect, but strong confidence that these are going to give a, a pretty valid indication. I think the other part that the individuals need to do, and perhaps each one of you have done this. Is to look to see if you're in fact near or displaying symptoms yourself. If you're around individuals who are displaying symptoms, then you might have to again, go to a healthcare facility to see a primary, a, a medical provider, a clinician to be tested. But it should give you a baseline and a good starting point, but, but you're absolutely right. I don't, that there is a it isn't, it isn't completely you know, without, without, you know, some variable there where you can have a false, false negative or a false positive. I think it's more of a false negative.
What are the, in terms of what you're hearing, what are the symptoms that people usually are exhibited that have a, a fairly good dose of this, this virus?
And, and that varies, but individuals typically, there's going to be a fever.
Fever?
Coughing, fatigue, strong headache. Individuals here may be able to, to comment or maybe even in the viewing on instead of experience some or even all of them. But typically those are, those are the symptoms of a fatigue, headache, coughing. And that, that, those margins are fairly wide as far as the severity and the variability in that.
I mean, how long generally do those symptoms persist once somebody gets them?
And that can vary as well. People are considered, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to give you a couple of examples, not examples, but a couple of data points. People are considered contagious two days before they display symptoms and two days after. Isolation is now five days, full five days. But we ask you to take precautions that we, CDC, World Health Organization, ask you to take precautions for 10 days. It doesn't mean you need to isolate. Five, five full days of isolating, 10 days to take precautions. So how long do those symptoms last? I think that, I think there's a, a quite, a, a large variant in that. Depending upon the individual, some individuals, and you've probably have read some of the articles about long COVID, some individuals are experiencing long, long time symptoms that quite frankly, we haven't seen the longitudinal study on that in public health. These are uncharted waters. Clearly, we don't have the information. But you know, it's in difficult, it's difficult. In public health, we're supposed to deliver information with credibility to give you information. And the information many times, and this isn't to be critical. This is, this is the, the state of what we have. Information on Monday really had, was not useless, but had changed by Thursday. It happened every day. You saw it on the nightly news. That continues, but we, the concern that we see right now is the numbers that are being reported are higher in Yarmouth than anywhere on the Cape. That should, that should draw some caution. And you, you'd say, okay, well, if I'm going to be in settings indoors, if I'm going to go to a party. If I'm going to have a graduation party, I may want to take precautions. This is by no means a mandate and please, by no means intended to cause panic or to scare anyone, by no means.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything?
No, I just say, speaking to long COVID, my brother had COVID a year ago, December. And has been diagnosed with long COVID and is now on disability and no longer can work. Because he is so fatigued, he can't, he can't work. And he's involved in three different studies, one with the National Institute of Health, one with Leahy Clinic and one with Mass General, trying to find a source and relief.
I, I'm, I'm so sorry to hear that, but I, I'm glad you gave, you had the courage to give that testimony and that so the individuals at home understand the severity that can happen. And many times we think of brain fog with cancer treatments and chemotherapy. It can also be with, with COVID as well. I, now it's all the more reason to be taking the precautions that, that are necessary to, to maintain good primary health, mental health. That's, that's important. You know, the, every successful entity is built on a foundation of good health. Primary health, mental health, oral health. That's really, that's really the, the focus and the charge in, for our department.
All right. Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure meeting you. Thank you for the opportunity.
You have a question for him? Can you hold one second? We have somebody, go ahead, Vida. This isn't a a public forum, but I'll allow you to ask him one question.
Could you please define how you arrive at the positivity rate? I'm thinking, when I saw the first slide, which indicated that we had what, 21 active cases?
Right.
Today or whenever. Is there a time span involved? I mean, how did we arrive at that 11 plus?
So, so we, we arrived that on the second slide you saw, our information comes from a number of different sources. And these are, it's called the Maven system through the State Department of Public Health. So reported tests to the State Department of Public Health at a, at a healthcare facility. And that's a reportable, you know, condition. COVID, our positivity rate is at 11%. Now, we know full well, a lot more tests are being done in the community and we encourage that. But our, of the tests that are being done and reported in, in Yarmouth. Our positivity rate is at 11%.
But what, what are the numbers involved in, at arriving at the positivity rate? Doesn't, doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, the ones that you had on your slide? Is it the active cases to total population or what, what are we talking about?
Not total population. It's the number of people that are tested. And reported through the Maven system at State DPH, 11% are positive. Not the population of the community. It's the, the universe is how many people.
So if you had 100 people tested, 11 would be positive out of that group.
Exactly, yeah.
It's a percentage of those people who are tested.
And report now, more people may be reported, but there may be testing, but they're testing at home.
Right. It doesn't count home tests.
Exactly. Exactly. All right. But it's, it's, to be clear, it's, these are reported through a Maven system that, that brings together across the, across the Commonwealth.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pleasure meeting you.
Next item is I'm going to go from COVID to wine and malt. Special entertainment license for a wedding at Taylor Bray Farm. Are we ready to go on that or not? Is this going to be?
I see Allison May up there.
That's Allison May. Okay. Allison, can you hear me?
Maybe we can elevate Allison. Panel, there she is.
There she is. Allison, can you unmute yourself and can you hear me?
She appears to be unmuted.
It's going to be a dry wedding. Got her hand up. Do we have to recognize her?
She appears to be unmuted. Allison, can, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Allison, I'm going to read the legal notice into the record and then you can give us a brief presentation. All right?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen acting as a local licensing authority has received an application from Allison May for a special one-day wine and malt alcohol license and one-day special entertainment license for a wedding ceremony and reception at Taylor Bray Farm, 108 Bray Farm Road North, Yarmouth Port. The event will take place on July 23rd, 2022. The special alcohol license hours will be from 4:30 until 9:30 PM. The special entertainment license hours will be from 3 until 10 PM. Entertainment will include recording, recorded music by dancing and dancing by patrons for the wedding ceremony and reception. Hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 7, 2022, at Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, June 3rd, 2022, in the Administrator's Office at Town Hall or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth.ma.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. So Allison, do you want to give us a brief overview of what this event will involve?
Sure. You can still hear me, right? Yes, you can still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. It will be a ceremony and reception under a tent on the farm with about 70 guests. And, and we did also get transportation arranged, so no one has to be worrying about driving to and from Taylor Bray Farm. I wasn't sure exactly what other details you were looking for. We have event insurance. We have the licensed bartender.
Who's going to serve the alcohol? Do you have just individuals that you're hiring or are you using a caterer? Who's going to be handling that?
It'll be through the caterer, clam bakes.
Okay. We get any public comment on this?
No.
Nothing. All right. And this music's going to be recorded music with a DJ, no live music?
That's right. Just a DJ.
Okay. And you've notified all, you filed an affidavit. You've notified all these people on your butters list?
That's correct.
Right. So I'll go to the public first and ask if anybody wants to speak on this either in favor or against. Yes. Go to the microphone, please. Say your name and
Name is Bob Clark, both in a butter and on the board of the Taylor Bray Farm. I have met with Allison and her mother on occasions at the farm and reviewed the different vendors that she's going to be using, where things can be placed down there and stuff. And the Taylor Bray Farm is behind this and endorses it. And I can attest to that fact that the butter notices came out because I got one.
Okay, thank you. So you just got a vote of support from Bob Clark, who's also involved with the organization at the farm. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
So moved.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Does anyone have, does anyone have any questions of Allison before we make a, a motion? No? Does somebody want to have a, a motion to approve this now? Usually on the alcohol portion of this. We generally allow that for a day before so that they can deliver the alcohol and a day after so they can pick up any unused bottles of the alcohol. But this, this is a caterer, you said, right?
It is a caterer.
And you're sure? In other words, you're not, you're not going to have any alcohol independently delivered to the farm?
So we, we were told to go through a wholesaler to supply, which we did.
The caterer did?
No, they, they don't supply the alcohol. We, we went through a wholesale as directed from town.
He has to buy it from a wholesaler or if you did it individually, you'd have to purchase it from a wholesaler.
Correct. Right. That's what we're doing.
So just to be safe, if we have a motion to approve, I'd like on the alcohol to have it be a three-day license, one day before and one day after. So we can get delivery and pick up if necessary.
So moved.
And then on the, well, let's vote on that and then we'll do the entertainment. Okay. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that's allowed and on the special entertainment license from three to 10, can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Allison, you are approved. I hope you have great weather and you have a, a great day. And it's a very memorable event for you. It's a fabulous venue.
Thank you very much. We can't wait.
Okay. I like easy stuff like that, but I see Jeff Colby's on the list next. Update, Yarmouth Wastewater Project, Jeff Colby, DPW Director and Louis Ragazzino? Wright Pierce? I probably mispronounced your name, didn't I? I didn't? Ragozzino. Okay. Got it right.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director and Lou Ragazzino is our Owners Project Manager from Wright Pierce. We're also joined by a number of the members of the Water Resource Advisory Committee, as well as the Chair of the Committee is here tonight. What we'd like to do is give you an update on the wastewater project and finish up with some late-breaking information from DEP that just came out late last week and comment on that, what we know about that so far. But to start with the update, permitting is last time we were before you to give you an update on wastewater. We had talked about the MIPA or the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act permit that we were going for and that a certificate was eminent as far as being issued. That has been issued. One of the requirements of that certificate was to file for an EIR, an environmental impact report, and we will be doing that. We have reached a, an agreement as far as extending the contract services with CDM Smith and amendment to their current wastewater planning contract to do that work and that is anticipated to be filed by August timeframe. So it's a very quick turnaround. They've committed to being able to do that work within that timeframe. So that's an update on our permitting progress, if you will. So we're getting very close to having the permits in place that we need for a comprehensive wastewater management plan, but that is just one additional hurdle with that EIR that we hadn't anticipated. But we are making sure it gets accomplished and we're in full compliance. The next piece of update is the two components with regards to our wastewater facility. There's a treatment plant that's proposed for Buck Island Road and the agreement with CDM Smith to design that facility has recently been authorized. So that's good news. We are working with our Owners Project Manager to schedule a kickoff meeting for that design effort with CDM Smith. And we are still on track for a SRF submission, a state revolving fund submission for August of this year. So that's all good news. And I will add that I listened into a Cape and Islands Water Protection Trust meeting last week where a significant amount of money was assigned to projects that are on the intended use plan for this year. And with the 25% subsidy associated with those projects. So that's all good news. And I hope that we can be in a position next year to be reporting that Yarmouth is receiving some of those awards as well because we, with a submission in August for the SRF will be hopefully on that intended use program for our Phase One of our wastewater project. Our collection system is the next piece of the update that in rough terms is the pipes and pumps associated with the system. And Phase One is under preliminary design currently. All aspects of that are being currently designed. We're looking at which components and how to break that up. It's a fairly large collection system that we're looking at for Phase One. Roughly it's Route 28 from the Barnstable Town Line to the Dennis Town Line. We've talked about that with the We've talked about that with the board before and looked at the various maps, and they are on the town website with regards to what that looks like. And that all is within CDM Smith's bailiwick with regards to design, in the preliminary design. We do have regular progress meetings with them, typically on a monthly basis to review the steps and the stages of that design that they are in. And there's been ongoing coordination with Mass DOT for the two portions of the project that we're working very closely with them, with Mass DOT on. That's a resurfacing project on Route 28 from roughly the Parkers River Bridge to the Barnstable Town Line, and also the Bass River Bridge Replacement Project, including the Four Corners intersection with Route 28 and Old Main Street and North Main Street. Those are the two primary Mass DOT projects. That last project I just mentioned is at the 75% stage, submission stage. We do expect that that coordination is, with that detail on the design plans for, the consultant for Mass DOT, our wastewater and water infrastructure will be recorded on those 75% design plans. So that's on target and is happening this summer. And the other project is pre-25% design, and that means there's not as much detail on the design plans with regard to the water and wastewater pipes, but that is progressing. We know what the design standards are and the requirements of Mass DOT, and we'll make sure that those get incorporated at the appropriate time. So that is the collection system update. As I mentioned at the beginning, there was some late-breaking information last week. There's been a long discussion from DEP about additional steps that they would be looking to take to deal with nitrogen removal in Cape Cod specifically and some of our nitrogen-sensitive abatements. There are 30 of those across Cape Cod. And what we got last week was information that's in your packet from them with regards to the steps that they're looking to take. This is, again, something that's been long discussed, but looks like it is in front of us. We're still trying to fully work through the details and what those implications might be. As, as I mentioned, we just got the notice, you know, late last week. I know our town administrator has been in contact with DEP to set up meetings. In that information that was sent to us, DEP is asking to meet with the communities, and so we're looking to set up meetings with key team members and have discussions with them about the implications. We do expect there to be a public comment period as part of these regulations as well. So the public will be able to comment sometime, you know, later this summer or fall with regards to those requirements. But with that said, I think it's a good opportunity to turn it over to Lou to talk a little bit more about that. He and his team have done some review of what those might mean and some impacts that they might have. And Lou, if you want to comment on that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Jeff. And just to kind of briefly explain to the, to the board what the changes are that DEP is proposing, is that the, the information we've received, which came out on June 1st, indicates that they want to go to more of a watershed approach for nitrogen reduction than a town approach. And how that affects Yarmouth is you have two shared watersheds. You have the Lewis Bay watershed and the Bass River watershed. So as those permits are developed, there's going to have to be some collaboration with your neighbors, Barnstable and Dennis, and looking at how you could reduce nitrogen in those watersheds. So that's actually good news for Yarmouth, because now you have some shared responsibility on those nitrogen reduction loads that are in the 208 wastewater facilities plan that the Cape Cod Commission developed, as well as in your comprehensive wastewater management plan. The other information that they prevented and presented and what's been developed for the town already kind of puts, you're in a good position, because you're already implementing some of the measures that these letters are intended to produce. So the towns that are lagging behind Yarmouth in their nitrogen reduction measures, that's what this was targeted for. You know, Yarmouth, with the fact that you now have a consultant onboard for your collection system design and wastewater treatment system, will, will show them that you're making, taking the efforts necessary to meet these goals. And how, how you move into the next phases, you know, you'll have that 20-year period to do that. So from, from, you know, we've only received this last week, as you did, and only spent a day or two looking it over, but we think Yarmouth is in good position. It shouldn't change anything that's required or that's already been implemented and actually may be some cost reduction measures going forward as you look at some cost sharing in those outlined watersheds.
So with that said, we're happy to answer any questions or take any feedback from the selectmen that you'd like us to try to investigate as we start to, you know, peel back the, the layers of these new regulations.
Mark. Mr. Chairman, thank you. As the Yarmouth representative of the board's representative to the Clean Water, Cape and Islands Clean Water Fund, I participated in the briefing. It was a significant meeting and it was a very significant discussion. I'd like to elaborate a little bit further on some of the points that have been said. Earlier when we started as a board accelerating the town's efforts and commitment to addressing these problems, we were informed, informed early on that at some point DEP would go down this regulatory road, that is designating areas that are nitrogen-sensitive areas, and if municipalities did not take action on their own, that they would trigger a regulatory compliance, that anyone who has a septic system, anyone who lives within a nitrogen-sensitive area or has a septic system, they would be required to upgrade, to mandate and meet these new requirements. So this was, this was an item that we talked about probably two or three years ago when we really ramped this effort up. And I think to some degree, there may be some folks in town that may have forgotten this discussion, because it really addressed the question, why should Yarmouth do anything? If we were to do nothing in terms of wastewater, and as I think everyone knows, the town of Yarmouth has done a great job in moving our overall plan forward to the point where we're in design on the treatment plant, the collection system for Phase One. If we were not to make this kind of progress, such a designation, which is coming, the, the regulations are coming in place, DEP can trigger compliance with these septic system upgrades, forcing people or homeowners to upgrade at a fairly significant cost. We're talking, what, last time we spoke about this, we were talking about $25,000 to $30,000 per homeowner. We were talking about the, perhaps if, if, if in some cases there's a, an alternative system or an IA system, some type of innovative technology, there's monitoring requirements on top of that. So the point here is, is that if we fail to keep pace and stay on top of our timeframe, it's conceivable that DEP could designate watersheds in Yarmouth as nitrogen-sensitive areas and then force literally individual homeowners, they'll have five years to comply. And so that becomes a huge regulatory burden. And when we've made cost comparisons between the go-it-alone approach, the non-municipal approach versus a town-wide effort, the cost savings of a municipally-led effort, such as the one that we're in the middle of, provides significant cost savings for each individual homeowner that finds themselves at some point needing to hook up. So I think this news is very, very important. We had been actually wondering when DEP would take action, and in meetings that we had through DHY, we had meetings with the Commissioner and the staff through DHY on a fairly regular basis, finding out, trying to determine or ascertain when exactly they were going to jumpstart this whole new regulatory process of upgrading Title V and going, being prepared to go through the process of designating these areas. Well, what they're telling us is they're doing it now. It's happening, getting ready. So for those towns that may not be as far along as Yarmouth, the advice is really that they got to get going. And for us, what this means is that as we move forward in this whole effort, we, we're going to be in a position where we're going to be saving Yarmouth homeowners thousands of dollars as they, as they basically come into, come in and participate in this Yarmouth-led effort. So I just wanted to add that note. I think it's also important to point out that the Governor, Governor Baker's announced an additional financial commitment. He's made a commitment to put more money into the Cape and Islands Water Fund. And as you know, I were, I served as a county commissioner, and one of my priorities is, has been to expand the septic system loan fund so that it covers a host of other expenses and that we fully capitalize it and ramp it up so that it can meet the needs of Cape Cod, which are going to grow considerably over the next few years. So what that means is that a homeowner in Yarmouth, should they need to hook up and deal with that $7,000, $10,000 expense, we will have financing available at either zero interest. In some cases, they may qualify for a grant, depending on their income situation. But the idea is to, behind this initiative is to provide very flexible financing for homeowners who, who will need to hook up to the, to a town sewer system. And so that's an important factor as well. And the fact the Governor basically is pledging money for that initiative as well, which is very exciting. So this meeting that we had, the briefing, I think it's very, very significant. It's a very significant step in terms of the state now becoming more aggressive on a regulatory basis. It's putting everybody on notice that they've got to step up with their plans and start accelerating them, but they're also stepping up and providing money and resources to help the towns accomplish this. So I think those, those are my observations. I, I think it's great that you're here to update us, and I just wanted to share those observations as well with the rest of the board and the, and the community.
Thank you, Mark. Dan?
I think as I've said any number of times, a lot of balls in the air, but from where I'm sitting, it's comforting to know that you seem to have your eye on all of them, even the ones that are catching you a little bit by surprise, and you're getting the things done in a timely way. So very appreciative of that and the work of the committee. Couple of questions. The shift to a watershed approach by DEP, does that affect at all our phasing of the wastewater project that we've delineated thus far? I mean, our phasing, is that going to be affected in any way? Are we going to have to realign things to, to address the new changes here?
That's a great question, and, and some of that information is still to be determined. But I would say that as our phasing is now, even before this news from DEP, there was likely to be some changes or tweaks or adjustments that are needed. It's an active planning tool, if you will. With that said, I think this does have some impact, and what those are, we still have to determine. I think there's a pretty, there's indications in the DEP information that there's a pretty aggressive, they'd like to see a pretty aggressive program, and so we may need to adjust some timelines. But as Selectman Forrest mentioned, we've got a very good plan, and we're moving in the directions that we need to. But we may need to adjust our timing, depending on what actually comes out as the final version of these regulations.
Again, with the watershed approach and the fact that we're going to have to deal with neighbors, is DEP or the state proposing any kind of sample agreements that towns can work with? Are we right now beginning to look at that process of intermunicipal agreements with Dennis and with Barnstable? Where are we on that?
That's a great question as well. We've already started that process. We have a draft that Barnstable sent us that they have as far as a watershed permit on the, the western side of their community with some of the other towns that they're working with. And we also do know that the Pleasant Bay watershed, that's Chatham and Harwich, Brewster and Arleens, is a very good template. In fact, I think that's the one that a, a lot of, of the state regulatory agencies point to as, as a, as a model. It was one of the first in the Commonwealth, and it is a pretty solid example of what we could do. That's with multiple communities. In our case, we only have one other community that we'll have to, you know, work through those issues on. So I think a model with, with four communities, ours might be a little more simpler than that, but the same thing with Barnstable, they had multiple other communities they were agreeing with, and we just have one. So I think ours will be a little more straightforward, a little simpler.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Dorcas, do you have any questions or comments?
I can see that a lot of hard work has been put into this up to this point, and that you do seem to be ahead of the curve, and I'm very happy to see that. I think I'm just going to step back on it at this point, a little too new to really comment.
Thank you. Lou, this general watershed approach really doesn't impact us, because we were always contemplating working with Dennis on the nitrogen issues in, in the Bass River and Barnstable in Lewis Bay. I mean, it would be foolish to think we could approach those solutions by ourselves. I mean, you can't have one town taking care of it and the other one just pouring nitrogen into the same water body. So isn't, isn't this approach more to try from DEP to get towns to engage in regional thinking and regional solutions? Isn't that really what this is about?
It is, and as Selectman Forrest and as Mr. Colby indicated, the Pleasant Bay Alliance is, serves as that model where they got collaboration amongst the four communities, where they could approach things with, with a greater impact from, from the collective communities. So if you're already talking with Dennis and Barnstable about the impacts, and your, your comprehensive wastewater management plan talks about reductions in those areas, it doesn't really change what you have to do. What it changes is maybe when you have to do it. And I think that's what Mr. Colby referred to as phasing may need to be adjusted. But I will put in a plug that Wright Pierce was very actively engaged with the Pleasant Bay Alliance, so we're familiar with the watershed approach and getting that permit in place. So we can bring that.
I, I remember.
I could just add something, Mr. Chairman, to this, to this very point. What, what DEP is doing is they're also creating a regulatory framework for the watershed permit. So rather than talking about it as a model or something to sort of aspire to, there'll actually be criteria laid out in regulations as to what this should look like, so.
Implementation, yes.
Right, and to promote that watershed data, that not every watershed is as detailed in the analysis as say, for instance, the nitrogen levels and the TMDLs for the Bass River watershed. And, and that I, I think is an area that they're really honing in on to establish for each watershed, right, those exact limits that have to be adhered to. So it's another example of where Yarmouth is sort of poised to be in a leadership position on that.
Yeah, but it's important, if I can just, just one final point. It's important to note that since there's going to be a regulatory framework here, as much as we're anxious to do something and use that as a model, we'll want to make sure that those regulations are flushed out so that we can meet them as well. So on the one hand, we can get ahead of the game, but on the other hand, we're going to make sure that those regulations are flushed out and have the detail that we need in order to comply. So on the one hand, you want to rush to get ahead of the game, but on the other hand, you have to realize that we'll be needing those regulations to be finalized so that our, the, the permit application that's submitted is, is compliant.
When they're talking about these long-term watershed-type-based permits, they were talking about, I believe, a 20-year permit. And I, I know this stuff is hot off the press and hasn't been vetted and fully discussed, but we were, we were thinking in terms of the, the various phases of this system as more about like a 30-year project. How's that going to get reconciled?
Well, that's a good question. Ours is more of a 40-year plan, and that's some of the timeframes that may need to get adjusted. Also, there was a percentage goal within that 20-year timeframe. So we'll have to go through and crunch the numbers. That's where our OPM and, and design engineers will be very helpful in determining, you know, what thresholds we need to meet in order to get to those numbers. So that work still needs to be done, and that's going to be, it's difficult to estimate just sitting here with this fresh information, but, and we don't even know if that's the, the numbers that'll be in the, the final regulations. Maybe they come back and say, oh, 50% might be a better target. So that's the type of input and that we need to have with DEP to help, as Selectman Forrest said, kind of mold the final regulation. So it's still a little fluid, the situation, but we do know that they're, you know, taking active steps moving forward, and so we need to, you know, plan for that. And I'm sure there'll be some adjustments in our phases, but determining today what that might be is still a little too difficult to say.
Or might there be a 20-year permit, but after a certain amount of time, you can renew or extend based on demonstration of a certain level of progress, something like that, perhaps?
Economic, social, economic impacts. One thing I may want to add that Mr. Selectman Forrest touched on is... One thing I may want to add that Mr. Selectman Forrest touched on is, up until now, there's no regulatory requirement to do anything. You know, so the permit is going to form almost not quite a consent order, but it's going to hold you to certain timeframes. And that's where either the compliance or the consequence may come into play.
Exactly. So if we don't pursue the permitting process, we might find ourselves with homeowners subject to this other requirement of upgrading on their own. So this is, what's happening is the regulatory process is becoming clearer and clearer, and there's going to be a structure that's going to force certain things to be done within a very specific timeframe. Before, we've been, like I said, wondering when is DEP going to sort of start making requirements on the towns and on individual homeowners? Well, that regular story, structure has just been, the outlines of it have been announced. Now they're going to work on the details, and I would expect within a year or two, they'll be in place. And then the clock's going to start running on everybody.
I remember early on in these wastewater discussions, that go back quite a ways, that there was a representative of the Commonwealth, I think he was from DEP, and he basically said what is in this document was going to happen, that if towns didn't get moving on these wastewater solutions, that they were going to enhance the Title V requirements, and that homeowners were going to be looking at, in many cases, innovative and alternative systems in place of what they otherwise would be available to them as a conventional system. And it seems like they're making good on their word, at least in terms of a cursory reading of what I have before me. But they did say they were, a long time ago, I mean, right at the very beginning of the wastewater discussions, they were pretty aggressive about it.
Right. Brian Dudley from DEP was involved in many of our public meetings and town meetings, and he was even a panelist on some of our discussions. And you're absolutely right, Chairman Stone, it's exactly what he was saying, because I think they've been talking about it internally for quite some time. We just didn't know when they would, you know, finally come out with that framework, and they have now.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you very much for the excellent update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have this discussion of Selectman goal setting and outreach. Bob, you got that?
Yes, just some brief information. I'm delighted to be able to report after the discussion at your last meeting, I was able to book our facilitator for your selected date of June 25. So we're all booked up for our process to go from nine to one, and I provided some...
What are the odds of snow?
Yeah, after a tough winter.
Yeah, tornado, there you go.
Is it hurricane season yet? I saw in Bermuda.
It is, yeah, it's hurricane season.
So cross your fingers.
Usually not our worry until August and September, though.
Now, some of the materials in your packet, we provided the goals from the last five goal-setting sessions, everything that we had in the file, so you can see the evolution of those goals over the past several years. And I think that that's very helpful. And there's also in your packet a copy of the recently produced Yarmouth Vision Plan that can hopefully feed the goals as well. And in working with our facilitator to prepare for the session, what he'd like to recommend that the board does is to, if each member could start taking some notes on a couple of things, the first thing, to establish the prioritization process for the goals, he'd like to assist us in going through a SWOT analysis where members of the board would have a discussion together and discuss what they see as current strengths that the town has, weaknesses that the town has, some opportunities that are available for the town to leverage, and also what threats exist. And if folks can kind of jot down some notes on that, you know, the first letter and all those adds up to SWOT, and that's what we do, is assess those strengths and weaknesses, opportunities, threats. And that puts together in and of itself a nice vision of areas that the town may be able to make the most progress in, where the highest level of need is. And secondly, facilitator has asked that, you know, take a look at the goals and primarily the most recent goals, the ones from FY21 that are in that packet, and maybe jot down ideas for areas of interest that may not be reflected in those current goals, that are reflected in your SWOT-type things, issues you think that are important, that you'd like to add to it. And also, you know, get an idea if things have been completed or have fallen, if some of the items are completed, there's those. And the other key thing was that he felt it would be a very, in terms of assisting in the implementation process, it would be a good step to indicate when you're reviewing your list of projected goals, a relative priority basis, that what he felt is that oftentimes when he works with communities, that they tend to be so comprehensive in establishing goals, that it stands in the way of implementation. And he says it's always better to develop some consensus on the highest priorities so that we know when we come back next year that those priority items have been indicated and that they're given some good attention. So if folks could look at maybe five to six that high priority item goals, and then, you know, we have the overall piece, maybe longer, but, so we know we make progress on where you want to see the progress. And I put the item on there and wanted to get some feedback from the board. We thought maybe that, you know, we've got two weeks to prepare for this, is that it would be good to do some outreach to boards and committees and the departments and see if, you know, that there's areas that they may want to suggest. I don't want to, you know, jump out in front of that, but in terms of outreach, wanted to get some feedback from the board on what your ideas for bringing that in. And we had done that, it's kind of a shame. And when we had that early January session, we did get some nice feedback, but I think it's a good idea, it's six months later, is let's redo that. And one item that's kind of a housekeeping item, the, I was a little disappointed, the LaRusso Center is fully booked up that day, you know, now that we're in the middle of the season, and it's a seasonal facility. So we're looking for an alternate spot. Now, we have the senior center kind of as a backup, but I'm very open to looking for, you know, an area that might have a nice natural setting that might be appropriate. So if anyone's got some ideas, I've got some of the staff folks trying to think of some ideas, but we do have a backup site, and, you know, we don't want to get costly or exotic, but it's always nice to have an inspirational type of a spot. So give that some thought, and any ideas that you have, you know, forward them along, and we'll do the research.
Is the pool at the Blue Water a little bit out of bounds? Is that not where you look?
It depends if they have the entertainment going or not. Well, get a little loud.
How many, how many people would be involved in this? So when you're looking for a facility that you'd want them to be able to accommodate, what would be the maximum number?
What we'd like to do is have this be a workshop session just for the board of Selectmen, so it's not really a public, I mean, it would be publicly posted but not have a participatory process with the public at this juncture. The idea would be to have the board of Selectmen be able to workshop their own priorities and then be able, and I'd like to talk about that in a minute, you know, do some next steps where we involve the public in taking those initial priorities, you know, to the next level.
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't quite clear enough. I mean, it would be like the five Selectmen, the two of you, and how many, you know, like, would you talk about a total of 15 people?
Less, you know, maybe a dozen people. So we need, just a small place, we don't want to be cramped in a tiny room, but we don't need a large facility, luckily, for this type of a workshop.
Well, one thing I'd suggest is you might reach out to the senior community, they have some really beautiful locations within their property that they'd be happy, I'm sure, to allow us to use, such as Heatherwood, Thurwood, and Mayflower.
And if the time permits, we'd also like to take a look in your material, there's the Board of Selectmen's mission statement, and I think that it would be nice to relook at the mission statement, make sure that it is up to date, modern, reflects your current thinking, and there's a process and some facilitated exercises to assist the board in recasting the mission statement. So if we have some time, we want to look at that. And the other item that I wanted to bring up is that for some of the next steps, what I thought might be particularly valuable for our organization, especially in that, you know, we haven't had since the FY21, you know, real goal-setting session, that we want to bring it to the organization, you know, as deeply as we can. And so what I would suggest is, after we make the priorities, that I'd like to take on the task of working with the towns' departments and developing a series of Gantt charts, which would establish for the individual goals, break them down into steps that would be required to achieve that goal, to assign responsibilities to particular parties for some ownership of the completion of the steps, collaboration on the steps, assign timeframes that we feel are appropriate and legitimate, and funding other resources that's necessary. And there's a process for that, that I can work and facilitate directly with departments, and then bring back to the board the goals, but also use this more of a formal process to establish the steps in the Gantt charts, so that when we put them together, what it helps to do, I'd like to try to work to take the goals when they're developed and push them right down into the organization as low as we can, so that we're all, and I think people really love to be a part of that process, to, you know, feel connected to the overall organization and its goals. And it will be very timely for me, because, you know, we're beginning to work with, you know, all the departments on various projects and things. And so that has always, for me, been a valuable tool, those Gantt charts, to push those goals into the organization, and you could pick, any person can recite the goals of the Board of Selectmen. And when you start to have that type of, you know, collaboration going on in an organization, it's very helpful. And so we've got a few details to work out, but I think that this is some good material to start preparing for this, and we'll get, you know, the time and place details out to you. And if there's any other direction that the board has, things you'd like to see, you know, feel free, because, you know, we're really excited about this process, especially with the delay that we had last year, and I think, to me and everyone, wants to support this board and help move everything forward.
I like the way you're thinking, Bob. I really like the idea of taking the goals and then putting them right into, basically into action plans. That's excellent.
Does anybody have any comments or questions or observations, Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to see if maybe we can provide some guidance on the matter of outreach, because I think that's a very interesting topic. Do we want to get input from other boards, other committees, other departments? And I guess the question that I would probably consider posing would be, what do you consider to be your top? Now, obviously, we're going to be having to identify our five or six high priorities and try to figure out a way to at least zero in. I think one of the problems that we ran into with the last few documents is that we wrote it, we made sure it covered everything, right? But then it became many pages, and then, yeah, it was sort of, it sort of, it was so big and voluminous that it just became almost overwhelming. And then we had these, these reports, what are they called? NVO or?
Invisio.
Invisio reports, remember the Invisio reports? Where everything was tracked, they were, I mean, they were voluminous. And then the challenge was, I think this was when Chris Dwelly was here.
Yes, I think Chris was the one that implemented.
Yeah, and it required sustained input from each of the department heads that were participating in doing this. So we started off thinking big, but just the weight of it all prevented it from going anywhere. So, you know, it's, when you look back at our goals in 2013, 2014, it's all on one page. But then as the years unfold, it's more and more pages, and then after a while, we're putting everything on, we're just sort of rearranging where it all is.
That all happened when you got here.
You noticed that, yeah. Thanks, thanks for pointing that out. Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
I know. So I think, I'm, I like the idea of asking department heads, not to tell, not to give us the wish list, but like, in terms of the work that you're doing, what are the top priorities? Maybe ask them the top two or three, you know? And I would, and I, you know, I would also ask the planning board, they're the ones that sort of oversaw the whole vision document, what would they put at the top of the list of the things that we need to accomplish as a board? What would they recommend we consider? And again, that's how I would phrase it. What would you recommend we consider as the top three to five priorities for the town? And then, you know, part of the exercise may very well be to see even among those, the feedback, the responses, you know, how much common interest there is. I think, I think, I think that's a worthwhile approach. So I think, I think that might be the first thing to try to accomplish tonight on this, Bob. And that would be some consensus from the board as to whether or not we think that's a good idea. I think it is, I'll just, I would put that out there, Mr. Chairman.
Let's stay with that for now. What do you think about that, Dan?
Fully supportive. I think it'd be crazy to go forward without asking for input from our staff, and particularly from our committees, our volunteers, they're on the ground. They don't have to give us feedback, but I think it's good policy for all of us to at least invite it, invite participation, and more information is better. It helps inform our decision-making, so I think it's a great idea.
Dorcas?
I think it's a great idea. I think to expand it to, it would be interesting to hear from all the boards and committees, you know, not beyond the planning board. There may be thoughts out there that will be ones that we really didn't consider before that turn out to be quite critically important, so.
Well, if I could just respond.
Merrier.
Yeah, I mentioned the planning board only because of the visioning. I would like to know, because they've put, we have a copy of the document, it would be great to put that test to them. I'm not suggesting we exclude others, I would agree with you.
And I'm not going to really expand beyond what they said, and we're all in agreement on that, so you got your direction there.
Thank you, if I might.
Yes.
In addition to that, I love the fact that you're including a public component to this, because I think it's, again, it's another further step of inviting input and participation from the general public. I mean, it's good for us to know exactly what they see as the priorities in our town, so that's great. I agree with Mark, the goals did certainly expand, but one of the things I found positive in that whole review was that how much got done? I actually was really surprised at how many of the goals actually were met and achieved, and I didn't appreciate that before. So a lot of that is to the benefit of this board that got the work done, but also the staff and our committees, again, for following through, because there really were quite a few of the goals that were set that have been met or in the progress, process now of being met. So, and I think that's why we do this. And I think that's why we do this process, is to just to keep that momentum going. And so I'm excited about the process, I'm excited to hear what other members are feeling. And really, the action steps, I love it, because it just doesn't become a document that we put on the shelf. It's, and, you know, to Mark's point, rather than a shotgun approach, it's better if we identify fewer, but things that we can get done, you know, more like a rifle approach, get them done, rather than just identify everything and put it on the shelf. So, thank you, it's a great plan.
Okay. Discussion of committee charge, Community Economic Development Committee, special municipal employee request and public disclosure.
Mr. Chairman? I would like to recommend or ask for the board's consideration to maybe postponing this item, because Selectman Smith, who's a former chair of this, I know wanted to participate, and I know tonight he's ill. And I think there might be some value in having a full board discussion on this particular item.
How do the other board members feel about that?
I'm completely, I'm absolutely fine with that, Peter will have a lot of information that will help inform the discussion.
Dorcas, you were in agreement too. Okay, so we'll put that over until the next meeting. We have room for the next meeting for that. We didn't do a agenda review yet, but whatever, the next meeting or the meeting after that, Bob, whatever the schedule will accommodate. We'll put it over. Okay, so I guess we're down to board and committee actions. Is somebody gonna stand in for Peter on these, or are we gonna put these items over as well?
No, I guess Dorcas is the appointments chair.
That's right, I'm sorry. I forgot, Peter is no longer the appointments chairman. So we have.
I think we could, I think we could move forward with this, these are committee resignations.
Starting with Richard Carroll, I guess.
On the Community Housing Committee.
Richard Carroll.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept Mr. Carroll's resignation with gratitude and appreciation. Sacrifice over in the town.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept that resignation with gratitude, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? So that carries unanimously.
And that applies to both of the committees? Because he's resigning from both.
He's resigning from the Community Housing Committee and the Barnes Civil County Home Consortium. Okay, so that's noted, that, that motion with gratitude was for both committees. Approval of Board of Selectmen minutes from February 1st of 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of our meeting on February 1st, 2022.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I assume you're going to abstain on this one, Dorcas?
I am.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? So that carries by a 3-0-1 vote. Upcoming agenda review is next. And we are down to Juneteenth holiday. Yarmouth Scholarship Presentation, Water Department Water Conservation Update, Public Outreach Campaign as part of that Water Department item. Proposed Park at 275 Route 28 Discussion Tentative, CEDC Charge Discussion, Route 6A Update. And then possibly the item we deferred from tonight's agenda, possibly, depending on what else comes up. Does anyone have anything else?
Actually, that's already on the CEDC.
Well, it's a little different, this is a charge discussion, the other was also a special municipal employee request and public disclosure.
Yeah, so let's put that all.
It relates to the same committee, but it's a different action item. See, what, just briefly, with these boards, if you're on a town board, unless you get, is this my understanding? Unless you get a designation as a special municipal employee, you can't take any action as a private citizen with respect to any business of the town. For example, when I was Recreation Commissioners, we came before the board way back in the day, and we got recognized as what they call special municipal employees. So I wasn't on the board at the time, so I, as an attorney, could deal with the town other than recreational issues, because I had that special designation. Without that, you're pretty much hands-off with anything that has to do with town business.
Right.
So.
And it impacts the committee in.
And it can, yeah, yeah.
Limits people's participation. So can you clarify that a little bit? Does every commita member need to have this special designation, or just? It's, it's not for individuals, and I want to point out, in your packet, Bill Scott actually did a fantastic memo that details the whole special municipal employee process. And if Bill wants to run it down a little bit.
You should have a memo that is actually dated today.
Can I, just a point of order here, Mr. Chairman? I think, since we agreed as a board that we should put this off, I'd like to stick with that, because I, you know, some of these things, I think all members have to hear this.
Okay, why don't we do that?
That would be great.
Bill will give us a presentation when we take it up.
Sure.
If that's okay. All right, your point's well noted, okay, so we're gonna do that. Anyone have anything else on the agenda, upcoming things, placeholders, whatever?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, again, just to mention, whether it's executive session or not, I would suggest that we have some kind of a hearing to better inform ourselves on the Solar Wolf situation. Also, I was wondering if we could possibly get an update on the Sandy Pond project and where that is currently.
Yeah, I endorse both of those items. And I just want to acknowledge the chairman's point about some consultation with town council on, it may very well require. But I too share, and as the chairman has said, I think we're all very concerned. I think there's some things that we are dying to get answers to. I think the big one for a lot of us is, as was said during public comments, you know, how did the state end up signing off on a firm where there may have been information that should have been known and understood by those, you know, who were involved in the selection process? That's, see, that to me, as this, I'm just putting my citizen's hat on. You know, the state bears some significant responsibility here. These, this is a cookie cutter program, they show up in every town, your town is designated. You can be, you too can be solarized, Massachusetts, your town can be designated. And as you know, this all happened and started at the time we were heavily engaged in becoming a designated green community. This was one of the things that you would be, you would get brownie points if you sought the green community's designation. So we went after that, we pursued that, we got grant monies, we got other benefits, and then this was a part of it. You know, there's a part of me that wants to make sure that the state, and I'm glad the Attorney General's engaged, but there's also some programmatic issues. The state, the Clean Energy Center people, the people that were involved in this, I mean, my hope is that there's a way to make the company responsible and step up. But if there's bankruptcy and there are proceedings that could take some time, then the next question is, is, I'm sure, if I were a homeowner, I'd be asking, well, maybe the state should be stepping up to cover this at some point. I think these are the, this is the kind of discussion, these are the kind of queries that I think we're all interested in pursuing. And, you know, it's just such an urgent community concern right now, that I think we're all anxious to get into the, in some of the details. I know I would, I would personally love to have some state officials here in front of us, so we can ask them some tough questions about their due diligence, their role, are they prepared to step in to help make people whole, things like that. Now, I'm very cognizant of the legalities and the legal aspects of it, so whatever the setting is, I want a setting where we can ask the tough questions and put people, I don't want to say on the hot seat, but really, I mean, because the people of Yarmouth deserve some answers. They really do. And if we're not gonna be, if, I mean, and they're looking to us to go to bat for them and to fight for them, to help them make whole, make them whole. And I know we're doing that, and I appreciate all the work that is, that Bob has been doing as a town administrator, and is stepping up, taking charge, and helping do this. But I think we want to show a united front, and so I strongly endorse your recommendations about a meeting and engagement with key people that are responsible, so we can ask them some tough questions. So I'm totally on board with you on that.
If I can comment just briefly, I agree with both of you. However, the way I think this is going to play out is they're gonna first, my understanding is these people are going to file bankruptcy, and if they do, it's the federal court, the bankruptcy court's gonna have exclusive jurisdiction over this matter. So there'll be claims, there'll be a process to make claims, there'll be a disclosure as to what assets there are to potentially satisfy these claims or not. And I don't see if that, in fact, materializes or has already happened. I don't see anybody really doing anything until they see what happens and how things get sorted out in the bankruptcy court. And then after that, then it's time for the state to make a decision as to whether they want to do something to help these people, compensate these people. They'll probably meet with their legal experts to determine if they think they have legal liability. I doubt you'll see that part of it in public. And then probably, if they do feel a willingness to do that, they'll probably come public with some kind of a plan or some kind of a proposal. But unfortunately, just because of the amount of time this takes and the steps, I don't, you know, and I would feel very frustrated if I was one of the people that gave them the money. I would want something to happen yesterday, and this poor woman, one of them, said she gave him like $20,000. Where I come from, that, you know, that's a fair chunk of change to potentially be out of, because you try to do the right thing and get inside, kind of get involved in an energy conservation program. I mean, it's just terrible. But I think we all want to help these people as best we can, and we all want to get answers. And I'm thoroughly in agreement with everybody here that wants to do that. I just think there's certain steps that are going to have to play out before we get the kind of information that we really want. So. And these bankruptcy proceedings don't happen overnight either, they kind of have a tendency to. I haven't been involved in a lot of them, but I've been involved in some, and they proceed at a snail's pace usually.
But I do think by us pressing on this, I think there's some, there's some things that can come out of this that can be very important.
I think we have to stay in close contact with our delegation.
I would agree, I would agree. I don't want to see, I mean, this should never happen again. There should be a bond requirement, I can think of a half a dozen things that should be in place literally right now to make sure this never happens again. I want to tell, I want to engage now in having that discussion. Yes, I want to help the Yarmouth folks be made whole, but everybody should be on notice that if, if it can't come from this company, it's gonna, we need to be aggressive, you know, with the other state agencies. And you're right, there may be legalities, but my feeling is, is we should, we should be strong advocates to all of these agencies, all of these organizations on behalf of our, of our community, people that have been impacted.
I agree with you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if I don't have anything on agenda review, I'm going to go to individual items, starting with Dorcas. Do you have anything you'd like to talk about, Dorcas?
Not today, no.
Okay, then I'll go to Dan.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mark?
Just a couple of items, Mr. Chairman. One is I want to thank all the residents involved, and particularly Mo, she loves to call herself Mo, Maureen, yes, and her team that put together the Memorial Day Ceremony, they did a wonderful job. I, I, I know, I know other Selectmen were there, Dorcas and you, Mike, and I understand, obviously, Dan was sick, so I filled in for his role and participated in it. I thought they did a wonderful job, I'm very sorry to hear that she's, she's going to be stepping down from this assignment. I think that's the email message that we got the other day. And I just want to say to Maureen and to say to her, just thank you so much for hanging in there and organizing this for so many years. And I understand that, you know, it can take its toll. But on behalf of the board, I just want to give her a real, sort of, two thumbs up, and thank you for all her work on this. And the other comment is, I saw an email from a constituent, I won't mention her name, but there was some discussion about walking dogs at the beach during a certain time of day. And, yeah, and I just wanted to call that to the attention of the town administrator. I mean, I think it's a reasonable request. I'm interested in whether or not there may, we may be able to find a time where there can be an area where people can walk their dogs on the beach. I understand it's fraught with problems, some people like to have their dogs run loose. I think that's a, that could very well be an issue, I know, I used to love to have my dogs. But this would be in January, when there were hardly any visitors.
Right.
And usually the weather was such that you'd have very few people visiting the beach. So I'm not sure what accommodations can be made there, but at the appropriate time, I'm certainly interested in any thoughts town staff might have on that item. And so those are just my, my two agenda items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would just like to add a word of support and thanks for Maureen Tewey Bedford for all the work that she did over the years for the Memorial Day service. Her husband Warren as well, who's helped her out with putting up flags and various other tasks. We officially recognized her at one point for that work, and it was well-deserved. You don't get too many people that take on that kind of responsibility year after year. And so we're all very, very grateful for what she did, and hopefully somebody will step up and keep that special commemoration going forward from, from year to year. Just as a point of information, I'm looking at, and we're going to defer on this, but Bill's memo on special municipal employee status is dated June 7th. It's only a couple of pages. And it'd be worthwhile for everybody to take a look at that between now and the next meeting, so that when he does go through this, we'll, we'll get a real appreciation for the nuts and bolts of this, because it's very important. It really, in a way, puts limits or creates room for people to, to function within the town as a volunteer and also to maintain their private status, so that they don't run into all kinds of conflicts of interest. And he covers all these issues in a, in a nice concise memo, so we'll take a look at that and hopefully discuss it at the next meeting. Now we're gonna move to the town administrators' items.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is the consent agenda, and we've got, you know, a couple of very important items on the consent agenda. And the first one is with respect to request for approval of the Board of Selectmen for the designation of Mr. William Benetti as the Acting Director of Natural Resources, effective June 22. And again, that's in accordance with the town charter provisions. And we'd also like the board to vote to accept $300,000 in grant funding that we've been successful in being awarded. I know Karen Green from the Community Development Department and Jeff Colby from Public Works collaborated on a great water protection grant proposal, which will be applied to the Higgins-Croll Road Project if we're successful. which will be applied to the Higgins-Croll Road Project if we're successful in moving that forward. And that requires approval of the Board of Selectmen. I know we had reported on the application in previous meetings, so it's something that we've been looking forward to. But I was just delighted to see that's, it's excellent work on that, on the grant application and those officials deserve credit for that. And there are also two donations for the Yarmouth Police Department, $750 from the Cape Cod Law Enforcement Council. And for the Recreation Division, $2,500 has been donated by the Wolfson family.
I've moved the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously and Joe Wolfson and his family, didn't they used to run Camp Wingate?
They did.
They were very heavily involved in the field of recreation. He was a selectman in the town of Yarmouth, Joe Wolfson.
And he did an outstanding job.
He did.
Yes. And I note that the donation is to help support recreation at the Flax Pond.
Flax Pond Camp, which is an excellent, you know, there's such a tremendous need for Flax Pond and the camp program in this town. And at the same time, there's also a tremendous need for some, for some financial support for people to go through that program. So it's, it's great. The Wilson family have been very generous to us.
And over time, another big benefactor of that program was the Moose Lodge.
Yes, very much so.
Over the years, they've given a tremendous amount of money to that effort. So I want to recognize them for that. Okay, now we're at the, thank you, Dorcas.
Before we, before we move, Mr. Chairman, I just want to know Bill Benetti is in the audience. Bill, there was never any doubt on this item, but we wish you the best of luck in this new assignment. We know you, you'll do a good job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Bob, what do you have for updates?
Well, a few quick items that I think are fascinating of the seasonal variety in terms of the promotion of the town of Yarmouth that I think board members will be very interested to hear. On July 8th, Boston 25 and their news division has arranged one of their zip trips to the town of Yarmouth where they spend the morning. We're going to park them in a beautiful location, one of our beachside areas, and they'll be extolling the virtues of visiting the town of Yarmouth. And we'll be working with the community and the chamber to, you know, figure out the best way that we can, you know, do our part to highlight some of the reasons to travel to Yarmouth. But that was something I thought you'd find very interesting. And, and here's, here's another one that's fascinating to me that we've been contacted by the Discovery Channel who would like to do a documentary on the historic preservation efforts that are underway at the Taylor Bray Farm. And, and that looks like it might be a substantive little production of some, some quality. And I just learned this today and I wanted to make sure that you were sort of briefed on its existence. And what we're working on is a more formal proposal that can go on your next agenda. And I'd like to see the board, you know, see that and be able to approve it. You know, hopefully it's not going to be an invasive thing. I, I think that the way I look at it, there's a tremendous opportunity here potentially to highlight some of the great work that's done in our community and a very unique property with all the archaeological significance out there. So I thought you'd be interested to hear that. I wanted to also, I was working with Jeff earlier today, give a little update on the concessions. And, you know, we're still suffering from the same problems in getting people to come forward with the concessions. We've had two bids. We've also approached folks with the food trucks. And we've had some mixed success now. On, on Seagull Beach, we have a concessionaire that's under contract and that's going to be going great. Now, on Parker's River, you know, right now, we don't have anyone lined up. But we do have, we're working on an application process to get a food truck down at the, at the bigger beach and we're going to be able to do that. We've got the application in. And so we've had some success there. It's, it's mixed. It's, everyone's been working on it. They're, the tech school didn't have enough time for this year to get anything rolling. But, but we're hoping, and you know, Bill had that idea, I thought it was a great idea for that program to support the culinary and we hope we can build that. And, and I honestly think that the way things are going now, you know, the, the days where, you know, you could just bid and all concessionaires would show up, you know, you're really going to have to, we're going to have to build these programs to make sure that we've got the capacity. So Parker's River is the one I'm a little concerned about now. I think we're going to, we're going to have, you know, some snacks and a menu at the other two beaches. But that's sort of where, where that stands right now. And we're going to continue to work to see what we can do maybe, you know, at some point. If we can get, if we have a temporary food truck, maybe they can move between the two beaches and don't have to be planted at one and they might like that. So we're working on it. It's work in progress.
That's incredible because back in the day, those things were all fully staffed and you could get, you know, drinks, snacks, ice cream, whatever, at all, all of those south side beaches.
And everyone's complaining about not being able to find the people to operate it. That there's businesses that say, oh, well, we'd love to do that, but we don't have enough people to run our primary operation.
They're probably right. I mean, everywhere you go, there's help wanted signs and people can't, can't get staff. I think that's true.
What about the condition of the facilities themselves? Is, is that any kind of an issue as far as you're aware?
You know, I, I've asked that question because I've heard somebody made the crack that it's not the, you know, the best facilities in the world. But I don't think that that is the problem. It's, it's the staffing. And, and I told them, look, you know, let's take a look where we need updating, where we need modernization. We're going to continue to do that. The way the board health works too, the amount of stuff you're actually allowed to cook these days is very, very limited. So it's not an issue that the commercial kitchen is not strong enough to support the operations. But, you know, you do need to keep investing in them. But, but that's, it's boiled down to having the bodies to, to run it. You know, even on, on the pre-prepared types of foods.
It's like, I'd like to put out a request too. Lifeguards are definitely a need in town as well. It used to be, you used to have competition to see who could be a lifeguard. That's way past now. I mean, we still have a lot of openings for that.
There was, there were years in the past, in the distant past, where we used to have problems staffing beaches, but nothing like today. I mean, we might close down, you know, I forget, what's that beach in Hyannis, near the Hyannis line there? That was one.
Mayview?
Yes, that was one we always maybe couldn't staff. But the, the major beaches, we, we generally could do it in Bass Hole. But I think, I think all that's changed. Kids aren't coming down here. The, they used to be able to pool their resources and rent, rent a place for the summer. Those days are over. The, the cost of doing that's prohibitive if they don't have parents that live here or some kind of relatives that live here. The money isn't that good compared to what you can get for.
Right.
Doing other jobs. There's a lot more consciousness about, you know, damage that you can suffer being out in the sun.
Right.
That, that they take, I don't think that's the major reason, but that's a factor as well. But we, we have a critical shortage of lifeguards now, we really do.
I noticed that Mr. Scott was raising his hand. Are you volunteering to work as a cook?
You're hired.
I used to be one, but a long time ago. There's an NECN special on this particular matter and the thing they point to is the wages in the service sectors have gone up above the lifeguard wages. So people would rather not, you know, risk, take risks at the beach when they can just, you know, do you want fries with that and earn the same kind of money?
Yeah, and it's not only that, but some of them, I had, my oldest child was a lifeguard here for many years. There's days when it's, it's damp and wet and you still got to show up. It's not, every day's not a bright sunny day, you know? That you got to go down there and kind of freeze half the day. It's, it's not an easy job.
So is this, I mean.
Well, Bill, you're hired.
Okay. But are you suggesting?
I have to update my certification.
We'll wait the test.
Yeah. Are we hearing that we may need to boost wages in some of these areas?
Well, there's other things that were mentioned in this special. During a pandemic, people let their certification slide and then they slid into other work sectors. So you lost that whole population. So we have to get more people certified. And yes, up the wages beyond the other sectors. I mean, people are taking jobs that are not lifeguard jobs that are paying more than lifeguard.
The other thing I remember in the past is, is, is even on the Cape itself, there's, there's competitive wages. And then there's this prestige beaches that people like to go up to the national seashore. And those kind of were like, they paid more and they were.
Coast Guard Beach.
Yeah, they were like, they were like priority beach assignments that not a lot of the kids wanted to take.
Okay.
Coast Guard Beach being one of them, yeah. Okay, anything else? Anybody have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, yeah, short, a short agenda.
Don't forget.